Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and it's October 23rd of 2025. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm not sure if there's anyone joining online. If there is, could you speak up? Any planning commission members online? Typically, he has both of those monitors on. The people joining are over there. But we'll go with what we've got here. Again, thank you. Good evening. Approval of the agenda is the first item?
We approve the agenda. Second.
Okay, there were a couple of things that I forgot. In new business, I'd like to add the initial discussion about the next year's budget, the 2026-27 budget in business. And in old business, there has been a development I'd like to explain to everyone about the municipal plan, MPG Municipal Planning Grant. Maybe even do that before the draft subdivision bylaw. And the budget can be after the pocket park. So would the maker of the motion accept those changes?
I accept those amended items for the agenda.
Second amendment agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, I think we can skip over a public comment. Carol and Francis in the waiting room. Carol, can you hear us? I'm not muted. There we go. Hopefully you can hear us now, Carol and Francis. Okay, so we'll skip over a public comment and move down to new business. And the boundary line adjustment on McKinley Avenue with the Bear Levens parcels. So when we met last, we talked about the acreage total discrepancy between the letter submitted and what was shown on the plat. And there was a motion to withhold approval of the adjustment contingent on a dialogue or text box being added to the plat that specifies how the parcels will be configured and the acreage size to what will be labeled as Plot 1A. Okay, Jim and Mark, it's over to you to address those two items.
Thank you. We have, I've been over to Bill's office after the last meeting, and I reviewed the survey that had been marked up. And following the requested additions that was wanted by the board last time, a new survey has been created. And so I believe that Mark or Sal has brought copies to you that are in front of you. You'll see that there is a box created on this survey that shows the respective acreages of the parcels. That piece that will be divided is Plot number two. And we tried to follow as closely as we could that those markings on the prior survey. 7.792 acres divided in two by that line. 2.672 is getting added to the 13.4 acre parcel of Francis Levens. The acreage was missing from the previous survey. The board wanted that added to the Francis Levens parcel of 13.4. Then on the piece that is going to get added to 13.4, the acreage is listed there as well. That is the parcel that has the hash marks that are sideways, kind of left to right at 2.672. That leaves the parcel to the left, west of that 2A at 5.12. So in the end, if the boundary line adjustment is approved as we request, the Francis Levens piece will gain acreage to go from 13.4, as mentioned in this box, to 16.072. And what will be left of the other parcel will be 5.12. And that's Parcel 2A. The rest of that parcel will be added to that Francis Levens parcel. So I think the changes that the board has requested have been made. And we'd asked for a motion to approve that boundary line adjustment as indicated on the survey.
Right, so our request for total acreage for 1A is now new Plot 1? In that text box?
Plot number one.
Parcel 1?
New?
It was 13.4, and it will with the boundary line adjustment become 16.072.
Plot 1 and Parcel 1 are synonymous, is that correct?
Parcel is, on the survey map, it says Parcel 1. On the notes that the board had left, there were there were sometimes the word "plot" was used, and sometimes the word "parcel" was used.
Yep.
We think that this is pretty clearly marked as to...
I was just clarifying that parcel and plot meant the same thing. Because the map shows parcels, the text box shows plots. As long as they're the same.
Okay.
But the one thing that, I hate to be a stickler, but there was a note that the letter and plat must agree in all aspects, including references to the 2008 plat filings. And the letter and this do not follow that, is that correct, Barbara? What did you just tell me?
Well, it's not, it's just a few percentages of an acre.
It's the same issue that I raised last time, that they didn't correct.
So the standard, the standard survey from 2008 has that Parcel 2, which is 2A and 2B on this survey. He drew it out to hundreds of an acre.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
It was 7.792. So what we have done is said that that parcel is divided into two, with one being 5.12 left. And if you subtract 5.12 from that 7.792, you come up with And we have added that to the 13.4 to become the 16.072.
Okay.
When you have a boundary line used by a river is the boundary line, you don't go to three places on your acreages. Just isn't done. This isn't man-made.
Okay. Okay.
Barbara, can I just say the letter?
What's the total acres now? What's the total? 16.4?
What is the difference we're looking at? How much?
The difference is two tenths, two one-hundredths of
Yeah.
of an acre, I guess. So...
The plots not line up, Dana?
The math doesn't line up.
No, the plots. I mean, does everything line up as far as if there's no discrepancy between the parcels designation and the lot and the acreage is approximately right, considering the fact it's a stream and it could change tomorrow? Equivalent over a tenth of an acre, it doesn't really matter. What matters is...
Hundredth.
Hundredth.
No, it's not a thousand. You'd have to go to the third decimal place for the thousand.
It has three decimal places.
But the problem is in the second decimal place, not the third. So the problem's in the hundredth.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to quibble over it. But it's still, the issue that I raised before was still not addressed. So I know how old.
Okay, duly noted, duly noted. I think we can proceed and look at the plat as it is now and ask the questions that I asked a few weeks ago mistakenly. But does the plat contain these items? Proposed changes to boundary lines? There's a no, speak up. Name and address of professional preparer? Numerical and graphic scale of plan, date and north arrow? Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes in rights of way? And a location map? Got all those things? Is there a motion to approve this adjustment?
Our motion to approve.
Go ahead.
You should do the motion in the second before the discussion, Barbara, just for protocol purposes.
Well, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Howard?
I see this as a very, very busy map. And I'm just wondering if there's something that would help to clarify it a little bit. Some of the things that I'm seeing. First of all, we've got a, the big parcel is what, 16 or 17, 16 plus acres? The entire thing that we're talking about here, that is going to end up as one parcel. What is that, the 16 right there?
16.072.
Yeah, 16. Would it make sense if the boundary line around the entire parcel that are being combined together was a heavier line? So that it stood out? And all this crosshatching that's on there? To me, if I can understand the crosshatching to show what's being merged. But yep, all the rest of the crosshatching, if that were removed, to me, would help clarify things up. If you took the big crosshatching up here, leave the crosshatching here, and maybe put a heavier boundary line around to make it jump out. I'd do a lot of looking to see what was following numbers around here. I just, to me, it would clarify a little bit. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Howard, that crosshatching was put on the plan at your request.
I know what you're saying. That was on there to start with. And day one, I I personally think that, I never felt that that should be on there anyway, personally myself. I felt that if the main part of a parcel didn't have crosshatching on it, but the other piece where you're, that you're merging on is crosshatched, I think it would show what's going together here. That's only my opinion. If there was a heavier boundary line going around the outside of the total parcel is what it's going to be.
Okay, Mark?
I think the, I think the drawing is pretty clear. I mean, he's, the mark is written in that parcel that is being moved. The boundary line to Levens to be moved to the, I mean, it describes that that line is the new boundary line in English. So I think, I mean, we're talking about aesthetics of what, I mean, what we want it to look like. There's also, if someone does a search, a title search, there's going to be a legal description of this boundary line that's going to follow the meets and bounds of the survey. So I guess I would argue that the survey is pretty clear that, and especially with the box that's been newly put at the side, it describes what has happened, that you've added Parcel 2B to Parcel 1, and the acreage has gone from 13.4 to 16.072. It's, I mean, I don't think it could be much clearer.
Well, I feel that it would but personally, I feel it would help clarify it more if the entire boundary all the way around was a heavier line. So that would be an eye-catching thing. And I don't really think you need all that crosshatching. The crosshatching is a little busy.
Howard, you requested that that crosshatching is on at your request.
Well, as I look at it, as I look at it now, that's my personal feeling. That's what I feel. I feel it would help clarify it. Maybe I'm the only one here that sees it that way.
Any other discussion or any reaction to what Howard is requesting?
I agree with Howard that it could be clearer if it was done that way, but I also think that, given the information that was added to it, it's, it can be, what's going on can be interpreted as a result of a combination of things.
No, I don't see any ambiguity here. Really, in the end, right, anyone that's at all familiar with this, when you read the dialogue box and everything, there isn't any question in my mind exactly what's going on here. So that's why I made the motion to approve it.
Norm?
I think I certainly understand Howard's, and I've had Howard's comments, and I've had a hard time figuring it out, in part because of the interchange between plot and parcel and no explanation about it. But having said that, Jim is correct. Anybody who's doing the title search, and I've done more title searches than I would like before I got somebody that was better and did it. That's going to tell the tale. And it'll make reference to the map, but the the description is what controls the future purposes. And if somebody comes up with a problem, we can address it down the line. I understand where Howard's coming from. But I think this is the description will take care of any reservations that people have.
Okay.
It may take them a while to figure it out.
My only request would be that a new letter be submitted that actually makes the correction on here, because the math is wrong on the letter, not on the plat. If the letter is resubmitted with the math at 16.072, I'm happy. Because that's what it's actually shown on the plat.
Okay.
The thing is, we have a motion.
The line of that paragraph, you're pointing to Dana, 16.092?
It's not 092, it's 072. 072 is what's in the box, and it's what the math adds up to on the plat when you take the plots.
Right, so I was saying, change the letter.
I didn't hear you say that, but if I had heard that, I would have said no problem. If you change the letter and make the math add up to what's on here, because that's what the request was that we we made, I don't have a problem.
Okay, okay. I'm going to call the question for the motion that's on the floor, which is to accept things as they are.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor. Prior to the prior to the vote.
Is the maker of the motion acceptable to?
Yeah, if we can get it done, yes.
And the person?
A friendly motion would be, a friendly amendment would be that the motion is to accept this under the original terms, which was that the letter and the plat agree by changing the math on the last acreage of 16.092 to make it 16.072, corresponding with the plat itself, which is accurate.
All right, I amend my motion, as Dana stated it.
Thank you.
Okay, who seconded it?
Dana seconded it, didn't she?
Did I second it?
I don't know who seconded it.
Andy seconded.
No, I made the motion.
He made the motion.
Sherman, you seconded the motion.
I think you did, Sherman.
It wasn't me.
No, we sure might have believed.
I will accept that.
Okay.
I will second it.
Good. Second the amendment, okay.
Okay, now I'll call the question. Will we accept this boundary line adjustment with a correction to the letter? To to rectify all of the acreages? Yes? Aye?
Aye. My motion was to change 16.072 to 072. It wasn't to change anything else.
Thanks for the clarification. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I vote in favor.
Okay. So 180 days to get the Mylar here.
Mylar is good, half the way, it was. I'll second that.
It's approved. Thank you for your patience in working through this.
Sorry?
Thank you for your patience through this process, both of you.
All right.
Okay.
While we're on the subject, can I? Okay. Considering the amount of time that I folks that we've spent on on these lot line adjustments. And I figure, I calculated it, and it comes out to around, we've spent at least 30 man-hours on this, on small things. We've got to do some housekeeping and have a letter so that these folks come in, they know what we want.
I think part of the issue from the beginning was that we didn't have good information as to what this was intended to be. Some of the sketches that were handed in didn't fit anything. I mean, from day one, we had trouble with this.
Exactly, but with the website, with the town having the website, there's no reason that we can't put together a letter that specifies how we want these things laid out, that we want the parcels labeled in a certain way. And what you make a reference to, a heavier line around the final changed line. And to make sure that, and mainly that the the parcel numberings are consistent and correct.
And the letter that's submitted, any communication that's submitted actually reflects what appears on the plat. I mean, I'm...
Terminology included.
Yeah, terminology included.
Yeah, and we're still thinking about, we can put this in with the other subdivision bylaw stipulations.
That's what we discussed last time, right?
Not many towns do it that way, but there must be a way, so...
To include boundary line adjustments in the bylaws.
Yeah, not just the definition of it.
Right.
Because everybody that comes in comes up with a new scheme.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we have to figure out what the scheme is. And we should be able to look at any one of these things and have this thing done in 10 minutes.
Yes.
Right.
And we will have a description of it that we'll find things that we have to add as we go along. It's different situations require different things.
The problem, and the reason I was being so insistent was this was the problem that originated in January, for which I made a contingent motion that was still not respected three times later. So
I mean,
how you can be more clear about what your expectations are and have it not be carried through? That's the only reason that I was a stickler.
And this is the whole deal, though, right?
Right. Plus or minus, right?
Yes, and it really just should have said on there, plus or minus. Sure, the tiniest bit.
But if they're going to do the math, and they're going to put the math on here, then the math should be the same on the letter. It would have taken them
Yes.
Two minutes to print a new...
Let's move on.
Okay.
So anyone remember the pocket park?
No, I haven't forgotten that.
So we've got the land, the half acre there. And we got it from GMP. But in the process of getting it, GMP was doing its relicensing with FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And the FERC put some stipulations on the recreational uses that GMP laid out. It said that we're going to be conveying this land to the town of Rutland for recreational purposes. And FERC came back and said, well, we want you to do a couple of things in order to get your license. It's all good, though. It's all good. There is a deadline at the end of this, at the end, I think, of December of this year, that GMP was supposed to meet. But they're probably going to have to ask for an extension. And the deadline was for putting a kiosk that GMP pays for up. And to get the content of that kiosk underway with all of the tribes in Vermont. Along those lines, we've talked about being part of that content building. And I still think, you know, we probably would want to play that role. So that's fine. GMP has has done these kiosks before in other parts of the state, other lands that they own. And they were going to give us, Mary Ashcroft and I went to a meeting with them, and they were going to give us some, an example from Bolton and give us some contacts with the tribes. They haven't yet, but that should be forthcoming. So the kiosk will be paid for and will work maybe not exclusively the planning commission, but maybe the rec department and the rec committee as well of the select board on that content. And after that, there's going to be a recreation monitoring program for FERC after it's installed. And that will involve surveys, for the most part, with the town collaborating with GMP.
Recreation. Recreation monitoring program, did you say?
Yeah, it's federal bureaucratic kind of language. Yeah, I think it means just, what are you doing for recreational facilities? And maybe reaching out and is this what the public wants? Are there some other things the public wants, I think? Details are a little bit sketchy. We, Mary had some concerns about, there's a at least one sign that GMP has been, has put up on the parcel about, it's a safety sign about high water dangers. That was, and they actually put it in, not the land that was conveyed, but the right-of-way always had. They put it right there. They said it was a mistake. Some of the select board said they didn't mind it being there anyway as a warning right now, so that may stay. We talked a little bit about security at the park. And the plant operator there on the other side of the river does spot checks. And a couple of the GMP people say they've had a lot of, they've had good luck with game cameras. being put in places like this. And then there was some discussion about maybe it could be hooked into the fire station somehow. So it would be, I'm not, I wasn't quite clear, was hoping for Bill to fill me in on that one. Um, how that would happen, but they thought they could get the signal to the fire station, could be downloaded there and viewed and all that kind of stuff. Maybe someone
For what purpose?
For security. Um.
So, but um I understand the purpose of the um the game cameras, but uh so they they would, they'd be activated, and I mean, they they hold a certain amount of data and that would be purged every so often and then updated. If nothing, if no reports have been made during that time, then, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and and so the select board the other night um talked about getting money in the current budget um to provide maybe more than the kiosk, maybe get the trail built, maybe get the overlook built, maybe get some picnic tables set up. And there is a possibility, the the talk from the select board is to have the park open with whatever amenities it has at the point um during or at Memorial Day weekend of twenty twenty six.
That's beginning of June.
Yeah.
But you confuse me in one thing. I understood first that the kiosk was gonna be built by GMP.
It's gonna be, it's going to be paid for by GMP and put up by GMP, and they would like some input, but not the only input on the content.
But then I thought you said that the town was paying for it in the budget when you were just
They're paying for other things, other than
I thought you said kiosk, maybe I'm wrong, but
GMP will pay for the kiosk.
And the town will not pay for it at all.
Town will not have to.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be the um picnic tables and
And yeah, the trail, um, they were talking about asphalt
Design.
pile calcium chloride on the trail. Um, so I I I think we'll have some some pretty concentrated work to do. Um, maybe we'll wait and and start it in January on the content, maybe getting some historians in, talking to the tribes. And that kind of stuff, and work through what we want on the two sides of the signage we're getting.
That's the signage we would be paying for. That's not
No, this is, we're we're only talking about a kiosk for signage. I'm just using the general term signage uh for this specific kiosk.
That wasn't clear.
Okay. What what else wasn't clear?
No, nothing. You were talking about signs, you were talking about a variety of other things. I wrote down that the select board talked about more money to in the budget for additional improvements besides the kiosk. So I had the kiosk set aside. When we were talking about other things, I said picnic tables, you said the um, you said the trail, and then you started to talk about signage, which I did not have related to the kiosk. I had it related to the trails and other things, which was not a kiosk related thing. That's the only reason that I asked about the signage. Sorry for being confused, but it wasn't clear that it was on the
It's fine, uh, you do two different, you know, I did bring up two different types of signage, the one that GMP put in, the danger of stuff that may or may not stay. Um, I haven't seen it yet. I've been meaning to go down there. I guess it's pretty obvious. And the message is probably pretty good. Um, and then the other, the only other discussion of signage right now is what GMP will pay for, which is the kiosk. But then they're gonna work with us on what goes on that kiosk. Norm?
How do we get ahold of the tribes? I mean, is there one council or whatever that we contact?
Probably not, probably not. And and I asked during the meeting uh for their, I mean, they they had to get in touch with all of them to do their license, their relicense.
Oh, so there's a there's a list, okay.
They have it, yep.
But GMP is gonna take that responsibility, or no?
No, uh, they uh they will, they will, they want to be part of the content building.
Who does?
GMP.
Okay.
And I think it's, I think it's safe to say the town will have the final say on what goes on there.
I'm talking about the um list of the tribes. GMP will be taking care of that aspect of it. We don't have to reach out to anybody, is that correct?
Oh, yes, we do. They will give me, they will give us a list of contacts that they have used in the recent past. They will say, here are the people you need to talk to, and then we need to talk to them.
And what are they going to tell us, Bertel?
Well, there was one, yeah, and you know, and like the the Western Abenaki, they really weren't down here. I mean, they're they're the tribe that's, you know, very prominent in the northern part of the state and into Canada, and then the Eastern Abenaki were made in Hampshire. Um, there was one tribe, the Stockbridge Muncie, that actually actually spent time here. They wanted to know whenever the soil was being disturbed. They just wanted to be present. So it's things like that.
This is not gonna be done by um by May.
Well, if we don't disturb the soil.
Call me a liar when the prediction doesn't come through, and you could pay me three times my salary.
It's too obvious, you can't have that.
That's that's the goal. Goals are not always met, but that's the goal.
Really needs to be done, Dana. You put some picnic tables out in a custom brush.
Well, is there any
That's the other part, the the uh the highway departments is, and there are, and the rec department are working on the invasives and what else has to go, or what needs to be cleared out. And that's gonna start with, they're not gonna start until April, but
So is there any permitting that has to be done?
I don't think so. Well, maybe, you know, when we go to the river's edge and try to put a boat launch right up into the water or something like that, but right now, I don't
Talking about that, though, as part of this.
Didn't, not now, no, no, and we're just talking about the southern end.
Yeah.
And maybe maybe adding a few more parking spaces if, you know, if
And and building a trail, we're gonna build a trail that
That this, what the select board has in mind right now is a trail from the parking lot, a straight one um to an overlook if possible. It it pretty much follows the right of way, the old Route Four right of way.
Hmm.
So it's it's flat, it's already has a road on it, so it won't be that hard to put a trail in there, just cleaning up a little bit.
You're not disturbing any soils, are you? You wouldn't be. Why would you be?
I don't think so, but we'll have to figure out what that, what the definition of that is.
Think it's pretty easy to define. We don't, you don't take a shovel to it.
Yeah.
It hasn't been disturbed.
Yeah, and and what, you know, what they probably mean is like digging deeper and maybe disturbing
Artifacts.
Artifacts, things that might be buried, yeah.
Or potential graves.
Potentially. Yeah, so um some movement on that, I'm not, I'm quite sure why GMP waited until October to to say that they probably wouldn't meet, you know, that they had to get this done by December. Um, because we've lost, we've lost the the field season for sure. But, you know, they they've got projects all over the state that they do recreation.
So this time, what we're talking about, to me, sounds like two things. One is the kiosk. I know it's related, but it sounds like it's independent of everything else that has to be done physically and in accomplishing it. You could do the kiosk without the trail, and you can do the trail without the
Well, I would pair it with uh contacting and speaking with all of the tribes. So those those are have equal importance to GMP.
Well, speaking with the tribes is just related to the kiosk and that one and the signage for the kiosk.
Except for one tribe that doesn't want any soil.
Hopefully.
Okay, it just sounds almost like
Theoretically, that that is
Things.
Yeah.
Barbara, is the construction of the kiosk a completely separate issue than the content of
I see that's a good
No, they're one and the same. The the construction of the kiosk, GMP will put a kiosk in for us.
And they'll pay for the educational materials that go into it. Right?
I don't know if it's gotten, if we've figured out that much detail, they probably would, they probably would.
I I was calling educational materials, which was otherwise, use a different term so that I could be clear about what I was talking about. So it's the information that will be on the kiosk that tells about the historic nature and
Right.
Cultural heritage.
GMP is responsible for building the kiosk.
Or having it built.
Or have, yeah.
Yeah, they they usually use, um, and they've been using Vermont companies to make these.
Ultimately, that's their task to get it built.
Right.
We control what goes on it, is that correct? To the extent that it meets everybody, all the requirements.
Right.
With GMP's
They didn't mention that that FERC had any say, you know, that that their relicense had any say in the content, you know? Just that GMP is involved in that process. Not that you have to include, you know, the history of GM, you know, it can only be about the history of GMP in that area, no.
GMP just wants a seat at the table as the planning, what we want to be displayed on the kiosk.
Who is going to design what is put up on the kiosk? I've seen a lot of kiosks and
Right, right, so let's not get too far ahead of ourselves. That is something that have, will have to be worked out with the select board, its recreation committee, the our recreation department, and us. So we're not, we we just found out about this last Friday. So. Good stuff, right? Okay, let's
So in in January, are we going to attempt to identify what the first step will be for us?
Yeah, or maybe, yeah.
We go from here on this.
Right, um, so we need to get the bylaw done. And as soon as we get that done, we'll jump into this. And I'm just predicting that, you know, maybe January would be a a good time. You know, Bill was, I was talking to Bill, and he was making a suggestion about our our schedule of meetings that no one can remember when when the next, when three weeks is or when the next meeting is.
It's an odd, that didn't mean it to be a pun, but it's an odd.
Twenty one days added to whatever date you're on.
And I don't know if this helps what we're talking about now, getting our work done, but he was suggesting maybe once a month and pick a day of the month. Like the first, not the first Tuesday, but like the first Thursday, second Thursday, something like that, and it's, we just go once a month.
I think we have too much work to do.
Let's let's think about that one. Okay, the um
Twenty one, it's math, twenty one plus whatever date you're on is
Well.
This is, we won't be making any real decisions about the budget. Hopefully I gave you the right
Hold on, wait. Mr. General
Um, I think pink highlight, it's not real bright, but pink highlight is our budget, so
It's the whole budget, Barbara, that you just gave?
Nope.
Look, are these all part of one set? I don't know if they hand anything over. Right?
They're individual copies.
Individual copies, okay.
Is there anything, Andy, what do you have?
Oh, I've got a multi-page thing here.
Yeah, this is
That's free.
That's that's a recreation budget.
Oh, okay, it should, it should start with oh three five two oh one.
We we've got it, it's all straightened out now.
Good.
The three gentlemen to my left had some other documents.
Sorry about that.
No, I think, I don't think it came from you.
Okay, oh three five two oh one town hall electricity, that's where we're starting.
Yeah, but the the planning commission has three line items on that page and three on the next page. And so our budget currently is fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty. Um. I'm not sure we can make a many decisions yet about this. I don't know what the um what the uh cost of living is going to be for for town employees, which includes the commission, um, the planning commission salary. So that may need to go up. We don't have to make any decisions about this tonight. The select board is just starting the process of the new budget. But as you can see here, they're they're, the second line item, um the regional commission dues, they quadrupled. But but that was, that that was put into the budget, so that's okay. It's the next line that I'm not sure what we should put in yet, but not knowing what the cost of living increase is gonna be. Yeah, Norm.
If in fact we go to once a month meetings, then this should be sufficient.
Yeah. Yeah. Good point.
Not meeting a lot in between.
Right. Not backfilling.
Like the like the subdivision regulations and stuff.
So this is more for uh your information right now. I think it's too, it's too early, too premature to come up with any numbers yet. But Norm brings up a good point. If we go monthly, maybe that has an impact, but Aye?
So right now, it's a level funded budget.
Right now, it's a level funded budget.
Twenty four, twenty five to twenty five, twenty six. The lines may change, but the funding is the same.
Some some is different, legal is different.
Um. The except for the planning commission salary, which went up a little bit.
Uh, three and four is seven and four is eleven, eleven five, eleven five fifty. And then you take uh three thousand and take eleven five fifty and three thousand, and you get fourteen five fifty. And that's exactly what we have in twenty twenty five, twenty six, uh twenty twenty four, twenty eight, five. So the amount of money in the budget in all one, two, three, four, five, six lines is exactly the same. They're spread out differently, but the total is the same. For what that's worth.
That was good planning.
No, I don't, you've got to explain that to me.
Okay, um, I'm taking three thousand, four thousand
Yeah.
And four thousand five fifty. That's a total of eleven thousand five fifty. When I flip it over to the backside and look at twenty five, twenty six, we have three thousand dollars more that are highlighted. A five hundred dollar item, a two thousand dollar item
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a five hundred, so that's three thousand. So if you add three thousand to eleven five fifty, you get fourteen five fifty, right? And that's exactly the same amount that is budgeted in twenty twenty four, twenty five with two thousand, two thousand, and four thousand four oh nine, oops.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Sorry, I I made, I I made the mistake, because I don't have my glasses on, of um thinking that that was four thousand. So I had eight thousand there.
Now, there's an increase of legal of a thousand, there's an increase in regional of two thousand.
I apologize, I retract that.
We, it is true that we try to, you know, we try to level fund as much as we can. But we uh we had a lot of legal expenses in the last fiscal year or the twenty twenty four, twenty five that we we, so we added to the twenty five, twenty six budget there, and then the regional commission dues are not of, you know, that's decided elsewhere, but it is, it is in there. It's accommodated there, and then then there's the salaries, like I said, with the cost of living, we don't It's accommodated there, and then, then there's the salaries, like I said, with the cost of living, we don't.
Twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five is eleven thousand, four, oh, nine.
That rings a bell.
I must have done something and carried along on these over in the backside. My apologies.
Yeah.
And the, the total for actual is ten thousand, seven, forty-nine, so we were
Yeah.
under budget by about seven hundred bucks.
And most of it was, well, the regional commission dues and, and legal. Okay, any more discussion on that?
The regional planning commission hire a bunch more people. Why would it need to quadruple?
They, they all make more money.
I mean, seriously.
They started charging a dollar per person who lives in each town, and so now there's an assessment.
There was, there was a flat rate. The, the thousand dollars, what they charged all twenty-seven towns, but they were doing more for larger towns in general. So they decided to go per capita.
And that just happened to be quadrupling.
It goes, yeah, it goes by population, the twenty, twenty population, and that's exactly what that.
Think of what it did for.
It, it's not four thousand per se, it's three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four, and that's how many people we have. In terms of. Rounded up to four thousand.
But previously we paid a thousand, we budgeted two. And, uh, now we're gonna be budgeting four thousand for the three.
For the four, yeah. And then next, this, yeah. It probably won't go up again for a while.
Other towns would have went down.
Yep.
They'd have to have fewer than a thousand.
Um, just a minute, Norm.
Yeah, I looked at the list that Barbara had earlier.
Um, I guess, well, this doesn't show me that. I guess it is, I guess some maybe did. Really small.
That Mount Tabor or somebody has two hundred fifty people, so they're only paying two hundred fifty dollars. That was the one that chucked out of me.
Norm, sorry.
Two questions. Do we have any input into these numbers or just?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah. A hundred percent.
I just wonder if the legal fees are realistic, that's three thousand dollars. I know that going over this with the subdivision regulations, it occurred to me that it, as hard as we've worked and as much time as we put in, and as much time Kevin put in to direct us what we had to do, it might be worthwhile after we finish her, to have him look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And if so, you know, that's amazing. Uh, I was surprised at how small his fee was. Um, so I'm not complaining about it. It hasn't been anticipated, then maybe it's something we ought to fix.
Uh, so you are, are you suggesting that would the number be higher?
Yes.
But you know, we're gonna have the same thing. We've done this, and I've, I've voiced my complaints about this before. We have the same thing. There's, there's some people who don't take their salary from the planning commission.
Yeah.
And that's always low. So I don't think we need to add a bunch of money to legal, so we can throw a bunch of, you know, attorney, sorry. But it doesn't need to happen. It can be, it can be right where it's at. If we go over budget, we make it up in the salary that isn't paid. It's just an opinion. I get, I get a, I get a bug across about that every time. We don't need to drive that number through the roof in anticipation of calling an attorney every time we have a problem.
If it's there, you use it, right?
What's that?
If it's there, you wanna use it.
That's my opinion. If it's there, it'll be easy to say, let's get Kevin, give us an opinion. I don't think we need it. If we go over like we did last time, we'll cover it for other things that are less.
Right, and that's why I did the calculation. I mean, last year we had a budget of eleven thousand, four, oh, nine, and we, uh, we're only char, uh, only ten thousand, uh, seven, forty-nine was charged.
Still under. Our, our, our actual was low, so I think we're good, even with a six thousand, four hundred dollars.
That was the big legal year.
Well, with a three thousand dollar increase on the planning commission, we should budget for that, because that, we know that that cost is.
Right, I, I agree, absolutely. Absolutely, and that's why it went up. It went up three thousand dollars.
Right.
Exactly.
Exactly, right, so.
And the legal fees are, a lot of times are out of our hands, and we, we get told that we need to. Right, so, I mean, whatever number we put in there is there, but, I mean, if we have to spend the money, it has to, we have to spend it.
That's right.
And last year, Kevin did a lot of work on the bylaws. He spent months because.
Perhaps, perhaps, since we're still working on it, he does this year, but I think there will be some, there'll be less in other things that we can milk that up, because the other budgets have been kind of level funded.
They have been.
Yeah, it's, it's a crapshoot one way or the other.
Well, right.
My only point was, is, as much time as we put into subdivision regulations and we'll put in in the future.
Right.
It might make sense to do it, you know, or do it.
But to Jerry's point, Norman, if you look on the backside, on, on the second page of here, um, we have planning commission advertising, um, at two thousand, that's level funded, and last year we spent fourteen hundred. So the six hundred dollars that potentially, that may not be used. We also had a line for consulting fees of five hundred. And we used nothing. But right there, you've got eleven hundred dollars that if you need to, you switch over to the, um, legal fees, and yeah, it may only get us four hours, but it's, uh, it, there's, there's money there, and so I, I think it's important to budget, to look at your budget holistically and not what any given line says.
Good point. Okay. On another topic. The municipal plan and the, um, municipal planning grant, the MPG that we were talking about applying for. Um, the application, the work wasn't really, um, moving along. I, I didn't have time, no one had really started it yet. But since we last met, the executive director of the regional planning commission suggested that the town not go for a grant, that the regional planning commission, because of the new dues, can find the staff to help us and, and, and save some money and not even have a contract. Um, I think it would all come out of the dues, and that he would make sure that there were a staff assigned to that. I brought that up with the select board, they went, sounds good to them, forget, forget the grant and forget the ten percent match and all that stuff, and all the reporting requirements and all that. So is that okay with everyone? Anyone have any objections to?
Not me. If there's less work that we have to do right now to get a grant that we don't need, I'd say, get it.
Yeah, it's, it's a competitive grant too. I mean, you're not guaranteed of getting it. Might as well get this freebie while you have it.
Right. Take advantage of what the planning commission is offering.
Okay. Okay. All right, are we ready to dive into? We really don't have much left to do. Um, again, I haven't sent any of the questions from this group to Logan yet. I thought we discussed, we'd finish up on, on reading through this and then send them one set of questions to get back to us on, and he can do that, if we, if we finish up tonight, he can do that in the next three weeks for our next meeting. So I think we left off, oh, and I also, um, ran by the select board, the fact that we were considering the, uh, certificate of subdivision compliance and the two bonds, and they had no problem with that. They thought that was wise. So I think we left off at just before section one oh five.
Page.
Page eight of eleven. For some reason I checked number ten enforcement.
Hang on, Barbara, I gotta get my.
I think maybe we, I think maybe I checked it just because it was more work for Bill, just as just as a little marker there, that there's another thing we're giving Bill. And he, he has been busy, um, reformatting this to match our other, uh, regulations and ordinances, so that wasn't hard at all. Anyone remember anything about ten?
Ten?
What is that?
I'm, I'm sorry, Barbara, we're on section one oh five.
No, we're just before, just before section one oh five.
Oh, ten enforcement, okay. My note, yeah, okay.
I, I, it says the administrative officer shall institute, uh, and it doesn't say upon, uh, direction of the planning commission. It, it implies that he can do it himself. I don't think that was the intent. Unless somewhere else.
I think it is the intent. I think it is the intent that he steps in where.
That he, he does it himself without.
Yeah, uh, maybe we want to add language that, you know, you know, we're consulted or that we, he reports back to us.
Um, I remember, uh, asking Bill if he was comfortable with that, and he said yes.
Yeah.
Do, well, I guess my question is, do we agree that he does this without coming to us first? That's what it implies, because it doesn't talk about any authority and nothing else that I read. No.
Okay, let, let me ask Logan about that.
Well, it seems to imply that the administrative officer has the authority to, to do that. It doesn't need to come to us and ask if we've given permission to do that. I mean, otherwise it would be a very cumbersome process.
And in every three week process, unless the chair was right? Home call.
My question is, well.
Go ahead.
Okay, section one oh five.
I wrote in the first line.
Yeah, the, it's not, doesn't need to be plural.
Right. What's that?
A plat, it, it should be one full-size plat. We only need one plat.
Same thing, right.
Yeah.
Same thing on the, on A.
This should, yep, and then how many, didn't we talk about eight copies? We are getting eight, aren't we?
The applicant shall submit five, um.
Phil had, Phil had a comment about that, like it was, he wanted it to go up at least one. Whatever we normally get, he wanted it to go up one.
Yeah, I guess you, you shared one, so we only been getting five, I guess.
Whatever it was, Phil wanted that increase for some re, I remember, because we.
And there are several members of the commission. If, even if a substitute is here, it should be the number of members of the commission. Presuming that we'll all be in, or, or a full complement of members will be here, so.
So you're saying nine, or you're saying seven?
It, it should be at least seven.
At least seven, yeah, and then I think Bill was asking for at least one additional copy is how I remember.
Well, maybe you asked for him.
Yeah, could be.
Yeah. And some, two people could share if they need to.
Right.
This should be singular plat also.
Right, right. Okay, um.
That five should be eight.
You wanna go with eight?
That's what he said.
Okay. I mean, they're not, I don't know how much these cost. They're not like my lars, but we'll go with eight. Uh, number two.
Bill will hear, will hear this anyway and, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Revis it.
Should revise it, yeah.
You hear that, Bill? You can revise that to whatever number you feel is appropriate. Kind of like enforcement.
Okay, and so the next section is about the final, the, the Mylar, and I think.
Uh, I do have one question, Barbara, uh, what, uh, are you talking about two?
Mm-hmm.
Never mind, I retract my question, I'll move on to the, for a minute. I thought you were moving on to, um, the next page.
Um, Bill, can you check the, um, the requirements there, and I, they look all, they look like they're all in place
Yeah.
from what we currently have. Um, number three is a minor subdivision plat requirement.
Before you get to number three, I have a question about F. Says future land use district name and boundaries as shown in the most recently adopted or amended version of the Rutland Town Municipal Plan. I just wanted to know how realistic that um, that provision was, because this is supposed to be a clearing on the plat, right?
Yeah.
I don't know that we do that currently on our plats.
So you want me to ask Logan, is this necessary?
I was just bringing it up because it, it struck me as being something that we don't currently do, and I wanted to know how, how cumbersome that would be. Yep, so ask, ask Logan if that, that worked. I was just raising the question for the group.
Yeah. I had checked it too, so. Okay, three.
Barbara?
Yeah.
In, in number A, um, second line, it says, or any other group designing, group, any other consulting design professionals supporting the application. Is it more accurate to say involved in the preparation of the application involved in the preparation?
Because supporting has another connotation.
Yeah, it, it wasn't precise enough.
So what is the change?
Oh, changing, switching out supporting to involved in the preparation of the application.
Okay, any other professionals involved in the preparation?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good one. Okay, number three, minor subdivision plats. Um, Logan has a comment. The intent is to acknowledge that depending on the minor subdivision, the scale of contours and vicinity map can vary widely in being a sufficient detail, but at no point exceeds what's required for major subdivisions. Uh, do you think that's needed? The explanation or that clarification?
You're talking about the administrative officer, that line there.
Oh, talking about number three.
Yep.
And yes, yes, what, what is, what the.
Administrative officer may require a vicinity map.
What he will require.
Just before the, the question.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the, seems like the term vicinity map, unless that's a legal term, is awfully vague.
It's.
Tell me what they mean.
It's.
And it wasn't in the definition.
It's this. It's in all of the surveys. It just, it's just shows you.
A blowout view.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Situated among other.
But does it, but doesn't it seem like we've never asked anyone to ever change that up, down? It seems like, why would we do that now? Like, why would Bill ever have the occasion before it's actually done to ask somebody to increase it unless they come with one of these before the plat's done, and we're like, that vicinity map is not big enough? I mean, it just seems like it's not necessary unless we intend to actually ever do that. We never have in the past.
I don't remember us doing it. So maybe we don't even need that part of the
Which part?
section.
The second part?
The, the sentence starts with the administrative officer may require a vicinity map. To, or, or.
Is that part of the requirement? Do we already, do we already require a vicinity map?
Yes.
It's required on the, um.
Major subdivision. Go ahead.
All the items that a, that a surveyor needs to do, it's, is the vicinity map there, Barbara asks every time. But we don't ask for a specific scale.
No, and this doesn't say that, does it?
Scale, I don't think.
It does say the specific scale.
Insufficient detail, says insufficient detail to.
It's, it's like what Jerry says, it's, it's like changing the size of it.
Right.
Oh, scale, I see it, in, yeah, in the, in the last, second lesson.
I guess it could, I guess it could stay to what doesn't really matter, but.
The, the map is of value, the vicinity map.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So maybe we should leave that option to.
Minus subdivision plat shall contain all the information in section one oh five, two, and have contours and vicinity map in sufficient detail to, I, I think, yeah. I would be in favor of, it seems redundant and unnecessary to keep that last, that final second. to keep that last, that final sentence on page eight.
Then, then I'm having trouble hearing you.
Uh, I am simply saying that the last line on page eight under, um, section three, minor subdivision plat,
Mm-hmm.
the administrative officer to the rest is redundant and, uh, unnecessarily complex, because they're gonna put a vicinity map. We've never had anybody, we've never had a question about a vicinity map that, ever. So I, I don't know that that's uh, necessary. So as far as I'm concerned, we could recommend to Logan that that be stricken. Andy, do you have a differing opinion?
Well, we do have, we do have vicinity maps. You know, we even have one on this flat right here.
And that's saying that, that administrative officer has, you could say to Mark Corcel, you need to make that bigger for me. I've never seen that happen. So it just seems like it might have information that's not.
Specific scale, so we take that out, yeah.
Yeah, why, why have it there if we never do it?
And he, he was already providing the, the map, the vicinity map.
I've seen that.
Uh, two lines up, so.
It's, it's interesting, in the next section for the major subdivision plat requirements, vicinity map is in there. And a scale is specified, number H.
Yeah, that's crazy. Hey, we should have rec.
Um.
I did highlight that too. Four hundred feet to the inch.
Um. Vicinity map doesn't have to be to a scale, it's just, just.
Yeah.
Diagram to show what's.
Where it's situated.
Where it's at, yeah.
And there must be a trade standard for surveyors. They're all about the same size.
Exactly, yes.
So, yeah.
And scale.
And scale.
So you could take out drawn-to-scale of not in that line, and it would still be fine. A vicinity map, uh, to show the relation of the proposed subdivision to the adjacent properties. I mean.
Yeah.
So the specificity of four hundred feet per inch isn't necessary, is that what you're saying?
That's a, yeah, it's more of a surveyor.
Yep.
Oh, we've never had a.
And Bill, would you check those, uh, requirements, the rest of the requirements there? Make sure everything's there. Thank you.
And, and under plat requirements, wherever they are the same for for subdivision and major subdivision, wherever they, where, where, wherever the same requirement exists in two different places in this document, it'd be nice if they were just the same.
Yeah.
Just, they were exactly the same rather than, no.
I agree with you. Um, the, the, on that same, um, subsection, H, it says, show all, at the end of that line, show all the areas within 2,000 feet of any property line. So the vicinity map shall show all the areas within 2,000 feet of any property line of the proposed subdivision. Is that? Is, is that onerous?
It seems so.
Two thousand feet seems like it's a pretty, it's half a mile almost.
Yeah.
And those seem.
Yeah, okay.
What, that's awfully large. Depending on the size of the subdivision.
You can't fit that on the size of a vicinity map that's on this page, this one.
Well, it depends on the scale.
Right, but your vicinity map will look like this. I mean, a half a mile, really? It's a lot, it's a lot, yeah.
Is that what, is that what it's saying?
This one's not.
This, but it might, yeah, it just goes over to seven. It's not.
I don't think that's a half mile.
And that's five inches, right? Top scale answer.
You see, one inch, it was two thousand.
Okay, the vicinity map, right?
About two inches.
Has to show within 2,000 feet of those, of the property line. And your scale is 400 feet.
We just took that out.
Okay, but I was gonna say that would be, so that would be five inches.
Pretty fun.
So you got five inches in both directions, you're up to full size, you're up to, to more than swatting a corner, that's for sure.
You, you've, you've got this and this. You've got this where my fingers are as.
Well, how much bigger is that? Is that five inches?
No.
Scale, one inch, 2,000 feet. Yeah.
Yeah. I think, you know, to me, that looks like it's about two and a half inches, maybe three.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Doing about a mile, he claims. I personally don't know that it's a mile, but, you know.
Seems to go in only one direction. I, I don't.
Yeah. Andy, what do you think?
I think we just, we, I don't see any reason until 2,000 feet. Do you, Howard?
He paid very little attention to the, um, vicinity map anyway.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be some sort of trade standard by these guys. They always, they always do it.
Yeah.
On there. Surveying standard. Yeah, survey standard.
Bill may have a better idea, but I don't, I don't know.
Showing up of each adjacent property, just to be, have the property lines, and so you see the divisions of each piece of property that abuts it.
Right.
Okay, the plat recording, number five.
So are we making a decision about the vicinity map shall show?
Well, well, I, I.
Are we gonna ask Logan, or?
Yes, yes.
Ask Logan?
Well, ask Logan whether we can strike those.
Okay.
So number five, um, I'm thinking maybe the planning commission can take, should retain approval of the plat recording.
Where are you, Barbara?
Number five, plat recording.
Yep.
It, right now it reads the administrative officer or the planning commission.
And you think it should just maybe say planning commission? It's kind of how it works anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll double-check with Logan that we can delete the administrative officer.
Right.
Uh, hopefully all these statutory citations are, are good. But, but, yeah, I guess that's, we'll have to run this by Kevin Brown at some point. Um, number B under.
Oh, 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 if I may. This, again, confusion, but in my mind, uh, in the second line, it says the plat uh, has been filed. Again, it says further down plat, and then the last sentence, it uses final plat. And I think it ought to be final plat all the way through, so there's no mistake.
Okay.
And again, in B, it doesn't say final plat. First line says plat.
Um. So Howard, is, is this the right way to phrase this? A new street or highway recording? With the when they come in with plans for a new street, it gets recorded?
Where are you now?
Um, B, 5B.
5B.
I, I guess that's okay, right?
There's all the statements where you sign it, where you approve it every time.
Right. And then it gets recorded.
Yeah, yeah. Why does it say select board chair?
Yes, my question also.
Um, because this language comes from different places and some zone, I mean, this, that was probably zoning language from some town. But yes, um, good catch.
Yep, I had the same thing.
That should be planning commission chair, right?
Yeah.
And you scratch out other stuff, about the select board. Is that what you're saying?
No, just, it's plan approved by the Rutland Town planning commission chair on the date of such-and-such subject will find, and it's signed by the chairperson.
Right, so you get rid of the stuff about the select, so.
Yes, just change select board chair to planning commission chair.
Okay. 106. Standard evaluation.
Uh, one more question, Barbara, before we move on. There's a, there's a line signed, oh, is that for the signature? Is that line?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, signature of the, um, chair.
They do allow initials.
Good thing. Size of the line they give you.
So the standard evaluation, this is, um, I sound, it almost feels like we're going back in time, or evaluating um, what comes in, but, um, the administrative officer and planning commission should evaluate, evaluate any application. This standard. This looks okay.
Yep, no objection from me so far, on page nine.
Okay. Moving on to 10. Still good?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It says at the top of page 10, the, the planning commission or administrative officer may accept the certification of independent professional experts as presumptive that the subdivision as proposed shall meet the criteria. Um, shouldn't it? Shouldn't we have some reference to, uh, professionals who are licensed by the state of Vermont?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Do you think independent still belongs in there, independent?
I'm sorry?
Wha- what about leaving the word independent in there?
I don't know what independent means in this context.
Okay.
That they have no in, interest in the personal interest in the project. That's defined in that paragraph. That the expert has no personal interest in the project.
Fact that it says may accept.
Well, it says that here.
Everything, I think.
Yep.
Says expert has no personal interest.
Right.
Um, I think, okay, A, 1A modifications.
1A, 2A, oh, listen, okay, modifications, sorry, yep.
Administrative officer or planning commission may require modification. Um, do we want to give that?
Crazy reviewing these.
No, I know. Bill? Or include him?
He's already included, isn't he? Either he.
Yeah, he's, I mean, he takes, he takes the first look at all this stuff and.
Well, we just made, we just made that, we just took this case and made modifications based on, um, on the plat that we received tonight, and we received last night, so I my reading of it, it's, which we're already doing, so I, I don't.
And which he's probably already doing.
He's probably already doing, right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think that could also mean somebody comes in for a five-lot subdivision. We could, it could be changed to a four-lot subdivision because of.
Discussion with Bill.
Right, well, discussion and.
All with us.
Going over independent experts or whatever.
Yep.
Man, that happens all the time with Act 250.
It happened here, we're just up the road from this. Remember, Howard, they wanted to have six lots, and it wasn't six lots, or couldn't be, because they were, it was divided by the road, so we did that.
Oh, right, no?
Yeah, that was, that's a further example.
Right.
Yeah.
It ended up being five, I think.
Right, correct. They wanted six, or hope for six.
Okay, number two, all subdivisions shall be evaluated against the following standards. And Logan says standards vary widely from town to town. Um, this one statute outlines the requirements for standards for subdivision bylaws. The below standards are intended to relatively to be relatively straightforward and not overly complex. The below standards also do not cover some topics that you may want to regulate. And I'm happy to send examples of standards from different towns in the region on these topics.
My note there, Barbara says, please do send us.
Okay. Did you have anything with the listed standards that you took exception to?
Uh, no. But he says the below standard are intended to relatively, to be rel, to relatively, I think you left a verb up, to be relatively straightforward and not overly complex. The below standards also do not cover some of the topics that you may want to regulate. And I'm happy to send examples of standards from different towns. So it's not what is there, it's what's not there. And I would like to know what other things we might want to consider that are not on the list.
Yeah, we should.
You don't know, you don't know.
Put some kind of language in there that says this isn't the complete thing. It could, there could be other things.
I don't think we can do that.
That make it unsuitable. I don't exactly know how to make the wording.
That's a question, I think, for Logan, if he brings us some examples.
Yeah.
Jerry, what did you have?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, uh, because I think there's some things in there that don't, they don't make sense to me at all.
For us.
One. Well, there, I mean, I mean, I, I, I think it's all a lot of that stuff when it comes to the, to the where you can build, that's regulated. When it comes to wetlands, it's all regular, but it's by the state anyway.
But the 20% slope is usually in zoning. So, um, that's like an optional thing that we don't have, that this town doesn't have. So that's one example of something that probably should go. I think, I think our town plan says we ask that there not be development on slopes over 20% for safety reasons? Like, uh, emergency vehicles getting through?
Well, we can have a discussion, discussion, yep.
Yeah, we need to, and Bill can help us with some of this too. But, okay, ask Logan for more examples. Um, so it just, utilities on page 11.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Hang on one second.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
On, two things went under roads. Puzzled me. Uh, do I think need clarification? It talks about standards A 76 and B 71, but it doesn't tell where they're found.
Right, I had the same question, Norm.
Sure.
So.
I'm sure you did.
Logan can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's just tinkering, but, you know, we have to get, can't hold them to standards with, that we don't tell them where they are.
Mm-hmm. Anything else there, Norm?
Yeah, in, uh, D4, road name shall be approved by the Rutland Town Select Board, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. Um, said road name signs shall be submitted by the subdivider, is that correct? Also, is that already provided?
Shall be installed.
Installed, yes.
Uh, let's ask Bill.
Uh, you know, back to road names with the select board. 911 system is very involved with road names. And any new road name that comes up, they, they take a look at the whole surrounding area to see if there's any conflict of names that, that could be confusing. So this is the select board, the select board does, yeah, they, they.
Approves.
Pick out a road name, but 911 is what controls it.
Right, and, and I've been at meetings where they, they, when they get a proposal for a name, especially for like a private road, they turn to Bill and say, have you done the E 911 check on that? Have, have you run it by them for any?
Because if, if, if they don't go with a 911, and, and there's a tragedy or something along the road, the town could be liable for it.
Right, right.
Because it's, you know, it's like we have Avenue A and city and town, Avenue B and a city and town, I'll, I'll always think, it, it just gets, I was 911 coordinator for a number of years, and it's, it gets mind-boggling.
Well, the numbering also, like in Main Street, South Main Street, it stops and starts up again?
North and south.
It goes to the.
Yeah.
But you go to the town, I mean, you go into the town.
No, also.
The city you're talking about, or what?
No, from the town to the town, when you, when you cross, uh, Route 4, coming north on Southern. You have North Main and South Main, and the numbering changes.
Okay, well, the cit, the city numbering is a mess. It's something that, that they can't even agree it's, how to straighten it out. The city, the city numbering is not, it's a, is a 911 problem.
I, I thought it, it doesn't matter.
We're almost done here.
I'm thinking about the city, it doesn't matter what the city.
Yeah. Okay, this, page 11. Okay, let's, page 11 of 11.
Hey, Barbara, take us home. We've got two minutes.
It's not a ballgame tonight.
Tomorrow night.
National holiday.
It's a football game tonight. What are you talking about?
That's right, that's right.
Oh.
Have a good one.
Utilities. Looks okay.
Yep.
You're okay with utilities?
This is very, this last sentence in one is very confusing.
Where are you, Norman?
Uh, in, at the top of page 11.
Yep.
There's small i.
Yep.
The applicant shall coordinate subdivision design with the utility companies to ensure adequate and suitable area for installation, et cetera. This includes in court conformance with utility easements of sufficient width to, then it says shall be provided to serve the proposed subdivision. I think if we took out the word shall be provided.
Yeah.
It reads better.
Yeah. It does. Okay, F, uh, wa, uh, water and wastewater provides, the applicant provides state permits, yes. The administrative officer or planning commission requiring obtaining will the, uh, state permits for adequate wastewater disposal waters. Um, what do we? Shall be demonstrated.
Either by.
By.
The administrative officer or planning commission requiring obtaining state permits for adequate wastewater disposal.
So, so I think we either need requiring or obtaining, but not both, right?
Yes, correct.
Probably obtaining is the better word here.
So, planning commission, no, shall be evidenced by it's not the administrative officer or planning commission obtaining the state permits, requiring the state permits.
Yeah, okay, right.
Cause you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna obtain them. That's up to the applicant to obtain.
So obtaining those.
So requiring those.
Requiring stays.
Requiring stays and obtaining goes, yes, right, okay, that what you said, yeah.
Yeah.
Should be, and shouldn't be requires and not requiring, obtaining, that's just weird.
The applicant provides.
Yeah.
It's evidence either by the.
State permits.
Firing.
So, um, it's, it's actually governed by the proposition at, at the end of F. So by takes a gerund. In the first sentence, it's wrong. It says the applicant providing state permits.
It should say?
It should say providing, right. Jerry's right, that there's gotta be consistency. The first one says provides, but it should be providing. Because it's, it's use, it's not an independent verb, it's, it's by, by doing something.
That would be the case in three, too.
So, right, by providing or requiring or providing. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Good catch there, Jerry.
Gerunds, oh gosh, I don't remember those at all.
Yep. Gerund.
We can take that offline.
Yeah, it is, but you're right. Hey. I'm confirming.
Okay, G, yeah.
It says the applicant provides written certification by whom? That the proposed subdivision will not require wastewater disposal.
State must be, right?
It must be.
No, it's themselves. He can't do it. I mean, the applicant can't do it. Yeah, the applicant's doing that, the way I read it.
Provides it, but doesn't.
The applicant's coming in and stating that they've checked that, that they don't require us to suppose a disposal or attic of water supply.
So they're testing, basically.
They're testing to the fact that they're not required to have it. Well, is that, I don't know what this means, I guess. Does he provide? Does he sort of, does the applicant certify him, himself, herself, it, uh, that, uh?
How about, how about confirmation? Provides written confirmation that the proposed subdivision.
It takes away certification.
Is that better?
From whom?
I think so.
From whom?
From themselves.
They're doing it themselves and, and they're saying that they're being held, that they will be held liable.
And they know they don't need it.
Yeah. Say I'm building a barn, I don't need wastewater.
Mm-hmm.
Probably not a good example.
Well, that's bad. You called the state and you asked, and they say you don't need it. And so you're attesting to that.
Yeah.
Right, so written confirmation, not a certification, because it sounds like you're asking for some type of permit.
It says certification, and that's okay, but there has to be some basis for it. And the fact that somebody comes in and says, uh, I certify without any basis doesn't tell us anything.
But we're changing it to confirmation.
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 I think it's, I think it's designed to just show that they've gone through the process and they're now attesting they've to that.
Maybe check with Logan. Just.
Okay.
It's just not clear.
Okay. Um, G. I think this, there's some, there's some new things in here, especially with the major subdivisions, the um, may be required to provide pedestrian and bicycle access. Um, bike paths, screening. We don't have that now, do we? And then there's like five where it's um, avoiding undue impacts to critical wildlife habitat and natural resources.
It's all done, well.
Mm-hmm.
That, the big, you remember a study was done at, at Dean Davis and Rod Chaffee's development about wildlife corridors.
Right, for Act 250.
But that was Act, that was Act 250.
250, no, no.
So this would be for all major subdivisions, so that's anything over five.
Is there any way we could get a 20 lot subdivision that doesn't go through Act 250?
We can.
It'd be virtually impossible, wouldn't it?
Be almost impossible unless it was less than nine acres, right? Isn't it? We, yeah, nine acres.
Right now, but there's.
But we're a one acre town.
Yeah, there's no way anyway.
It's im, so it's impossible.
Can't put 20 lots in one acre. So that would all be state anyway, through Act 250, the way we set now.
So let's just, let's just leave it in there and just let it.
A- and maybe ask Logan, does this really apply?
Right.
Well, it doesn't, you know what I mean, it doesn't wanna matter, so.
Right.
They're talking about G only, right?
Yes.
Or, um, H.
H. Oh, H.
H. Oh, okay.
No, 20 lots are are signaled in G, public.
There they are, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh.
20 lots or more. It's, it can't happen.
Right.
The way.
The way we set now.
Right.
Right.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the stuff below that.
And the stuff below it, we, we're thinking, just leave it in? There was one.
For major subdivisions where necessary in the judgment of the planning commission. So it's, we, we have the option. The applicant may be required to provide for pedestrian and bicycle access within the subdivision. Provide screening of development to increase privacy. Uh, limit the number of access points onto public highways. Uh, provide documentation from fire, emergency, and a school authorities demonstrating adequate capacity to serve the proposed subdivision. Locate and configure, uh, subdivision boundaries, lots, building sites, and utility corridors to avoid undue impacts. Take action to ensure that the proposed subdivision of land forms, take action to ensure that the proposed subdivision of land conforms to any requirements of these regulations.
Seems logical to do the same thing. In the event that a major subdivision in Rutland Town would not be under Act 250, it lets us have some authority in case that would ever fit those two criteria.
Act 250 could change.
Right.
And we could pick up more acreage.
So leave it.
Yeah, yeah.
Gives us an option.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we don't have to use it, we don't have to use it.
It's, it's a maybe required anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just when somebody comes to us and they're saying, we're saying, whoa, 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 hang on a second, you got a lot going on. Right. Those things we've witnessed, but, um.
Six, six makes sense because it
It's all like.
It gives us broad authority to, but only based on our internal regulations.
In the town plan.
The town plan, right.
In the town.
Capital budget and program and all other municipal ordinances.
Okay.
I, I think it's just a good way of just reviewing that we haven't overlooked something. Yes.
Ah.
Okay.
We made it.
Hey.
Okay, so we'll get, get Logan to respond to a lot of things. But we're making progress.
Very good.
Yeah, um, the minutes from October 2nd. Oh, anybody have an announcement? Sorry, skipped over that.
Announcements.
Got the minutes for October 2nd?
Motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd.
2nd.
That's second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Stain, I was not here.
I abstain.
Okay.
He wasn't here.
Two.
So.
Four, five. We are good.
We're good, rolling?
Alive unless we're here.
The minutes have been approved. We're doing better, we're doing better today.
Is that what you're usually doing?
We leave these, Barbara.
I'm taking this one, Norman.
I don't know what he does with them, but yeah.
Well, my wife and I, they see this people.
Yeah, it's like, we were talking. It works, really.
Thank you, we're adjourned.